Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
We have a, we'll do a roll call around when I get done. We're going to do approval of agenda, approval of minutes from April 5th. And then we're going to talk real quick about the mission statement. I think it's pretty clear. There probably won't have much discussion there. Discussion on the property cleanup ordinance, which we have. And then we're going to do a little discussion on the ARPA funds. It's not going to be very lengthy on that. So I want to get some ideas on that. And then public comment and we'll join. Look for a motion to approve an agenda.
Approving the agenda.
Got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Go around the table.
Oh, okay.
Because we got one on camera, so we have to go around the table.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
How are you?
So we're going around. We had a first, we had a motion and a second on approval of agenda.
Yep, approved.
So it was, all right, did Megan, you said yes.
Yes.
Stacy?
Stacy, yes.
Yes. Michelle was. Jimmy, you said yes?
Yes.
Fred?
Fred, yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Now we're going to go right around the table, just a quick introduction, just so in case anybody's watching. Jim Winchester?
Brad Marv?
I'm John Beshid.
Megan Randall.
Stacy Boxer.
Michelle Tackgrove.
All right. Now approval of minutes. Everybody got a chance to quick read them? You got a packet, Michelle? You didn't get anything on?
No.
No?
No. And I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't vote.
I believe that I revised the ordinance in the, I don't see why it's not here. It's been sent out to everybody, right? The one that I have been working on.
Yeah, we have the ordinance here.
I think it's included in the.
Oh, is that one with all the lines?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Yeah, this is just the approval for my.
Yeah, because there's a suggestion in the minutes that any accidentally spilt litter or trash will be properly removed. I'm not sure that I got that in there, but there's, to that effect, you know?
Yeah, yeah. No problem. Everybody's had a chance. I'll look for a motion on the minutes.
I'll move the motion.
A second? Okay, first a second. All in favor, Megan?
Aye.
Michelle?
I can't vote.
Oh, that's why you can't vote on this one. You had to remind me a couple of times because it's.
That's all right.
Just safe stay.
Yeah. Upstate.
Jimmy?
Yeah.
Brad?
And I, myself, as an aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to mission statement. You have a copy of that. Did you get a, did you see the mission statement?
No, I haven't gotten anything.
Okay. Basically, we were just tasked by the select board to do a mission statement. Brian made it real easy for us, sent over Brad Abur's mission statement. So we're just going to submit that. Basically, it's, all it is is a.
I'll read it. Do you want me to read it to you?
I believe there's already a mission statement from the town panel.
Yes, but they wanted us, basically what they're doing is getting each board to just throw something back into them so they can look at it. For whatever.
So, Michelle, it says, "The planning commission is charged with setting the overall policy and goals for land development and use, land use in town. The primary functions of the commission are to prepare and amend the town plan and land use regulations."
Sounds about right.
Sounds like what I always thought we were supposed to be doing.
So, fine with me.
So if that's right, everybody's in grants, yeah, if everybody's in grants on that, we'll just look for a motion on that to submit that.
I move the motion.
Okay. A second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Yeah, you can vote on either one. Jimmy, it was an aye.
Yeah.
And Fred?
Aye.
And myself as an aye. So that, we can submit that into the select board now. Okay. Moving right along. So discussion on the property cleanup. Now, we went over, we went over the ordinance last meeting. Get you up to speed, Michelle. We went over it. We had some things that had to get taken out.
Yeah, I have Fred's version that he had emailed, like yesterday or something, so I do have that.
Yep. Okay. You got the other ones that's all aligned, sir?
I do.
Okay, those are all the things that we were discussing and we took out based on some wordage or the way some things were worded we didn't want in there, so. So basically, that's the way the ordinance would lay out now. Does everybody have a chance to read through it a little bit?
Um.
Go ahead, Megan.
Okay, I don't understand why you took screening out.
I would.
On the second page, the definitions, you crossed off, oh, I see, you just changed, I get it.
I changed.
Never mind, got it.
Yeah, they relooked.
Got it, got it, I'm sorry.
I took out.
So you just relettered it.
I took out E, so you had to move the.
Yeah, and we had removed all the, right, thank you for doing that.
Junk vehicles are out of this?
Yeah, we just.
Yes.
I just don't think that there's enough agreement on junk vehicles. I know that.
Well, they already have an ordinance.
There's an ordinance, there's not an ordinance. There's a bylaw in place and there's also the state statute. There's only supposed to be three unregistered vehicles per property. Some kind of, unless you've got a permit as a, I don't know what.
You'd have to have a junk card or something like that.
But, so I'm just saying.
Are we concerned with any environmental situations from these?
That would be, that would be a health issue if there's something like that leaking. That would be more even possibly the state having to. If it was a complaint, if somebody said, hey, I think there's fuel and oil leaking, Fred probably would get a call from that, the health officer.
But you would have to go on somebody's property though, wouldn't you? To see that?
You'd have a complaint.
Yeah, we'd have to have a complaint on it.
Okay, so here's a situation. My daughter and her husband were thinking of moving back to Vermont and we were looking at some properties. And one of the properties, I got there before the real estate agent, and I just happened to be walking along the driveway and I looked down this steep hill and there's probably 10 or 12 cars. Some of them are classic, some of them are just junk.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how long they're sitting there. They could be sitting there for 20 years. And I'm sure they'll be sitting there for another 20 years if nobody cleans this up. Nobody can see this, okay?
So they're screened.
So it's screened, okay? But as far as I'm concerned, it's an environmental hazard down the road. You know, there's going to be leakage of oil and whatnot.
Well, you know, it's off the beaten track, is that what you mean?
It's way off. Nobody would ever see this. If you aren't in the situation.
Well, I guess you could put in a complaint. Fred?
It's really not a health, it's not a health, more a health issue.
No, it's environmental.
We primarily deal with, primarily with rental properties. Issues that deal with rental properties. I think your best step would be to contact somebody in the environmental division of the state of Vermont. They have people that travel the whole state.
Okay.
Dealing with stuff like.
Because that's what, I remember Tim Gilbert did that up on.
Okay, I didn't mean to divert from the topic.
No, no, no.
Right.
You have a real estate agent? You have a real estate agent? I wonder why they didn't mention it. I mean, if you'd like to see somebody clean, I think they would say to the owner of the property, I'm trying to sell you land, why don't you clean this up?
Is it the property that you were looking at?
No, it's a neighbor's adjacent house. Yeah. But it was blatant.
So as far as junk goes, people would say, you know, some things might look like junk and stuff, it might be a treasure to that person that owns them.
Well, that's why we said that about screening.
Right, that's, that's the hard part about getting rid of that kind of stuff.
Well, the same thing with.
But still.
So if you've got garbage, literally food garbage.
That's, that's what we're trying to clean up. And they screen that, then it's okay?
No, no, no. It's not, it's specified in the ordinance.
Right.
It says that they have to put it in a bin or something with a lid and that leaving it out in plastic bags.
We're hoping to get rid of that.
So the screening is just for metal objects that people don't, don't think it's good looking.
Right.
And as Fred pointed out, and, you know, I think you and I agreed, I think I agreed with what you were saying. You read the definition at the last meeting of what junk actually is, according to the dictionary. And I think it's a, it's a useful word, but Fred pointed out, and, you know, I talked to different people after you said that, and they agreed with me that it is a pejorative term. It's, it's negative, it's judgy.
We're, we're in changing times now.
Yeah, and some of the people, some of the people who, who are the worst offenders would be, no offense.
Maybe not, maybe not even that so much. It's like, you know, use of the word as it's often used, I think, is a form of judgment.
Yes, it is, yes, exactly.
If somebody's.
And so, we, you know, we don't want to come.
Sometimes it's the best they can do. And it's like, no, then it really hurts.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's the best that they can do.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not always the case, but it's.
No, sometimes.
So rather than, rather than use, it's, the word is always, outlived its usefulness, I think.
Well, I don't know. It's a pretty solid word. Good old Anglo-Saxon word, but however, in this instance, I accepted your opinion because you've been really good at doing this with it, so.
So basically, this now is drawn up pretty decent, I think.
Yes.
All right, we can go.
I, I think going forward here, what we're looking at is, we're going to submit this to the select board. They got to go and review it. If they want to sit down with us, we'll just put it in. If they want to sit down with us and go over that, we can try to do a joint meeting to go over it. And they're going to have to hash it out, look at it, see what they think. If they want to go forward with it, then they're going to have to have meetings on it. They have to have public meetings, so.
I think the one thing maybe I, where I took a liberty is coming up with a title for it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Because I struck junk and junk vehicles.
Oh, yes.
And changed it to outdoor storage of household trash.
Good, okay.
Yes, that was good.
I think that's fine.
I mean, does anybody have any problems with it like it is now? Or anybody in favor of submitting that?
So, I just want to.
I think it's as good as it's going to get.
Right.
And they're going to probably, they might hack it apart some more.
We could go over this and over and over for months.
Right.
And try to make it better. We're not going to make this perfect.
No.
I think the bottom line is, who's going to enforce it and how's it going to get enforced?
That's, that's what the select board has got to try to figure out. That's not for us to figure out, we just got to submit this forward. Go ahead, Jimmy.
No, no, why don't we like to select and slice and dice it?
There was one thing, Fred, I put it in because I think it was Mike Gardner said that he wanted to be sure about the process of how we deal with this. So upon receiving a complaint, I don't know why you took that out.
Um, I did, I took it out because I think that would be something that needs to be discussed in more depth.
Okay.
Because it's really, it's, health officer, zoning administrator will perform an inspection. But I think that's going outside of, outside of the bounds.
Of your job?
And, you know, I guess, receiving a complaint with.
Yeah, it could be.
In what form?
You know, written complaint.
Stop me on the street and say, I don't like, I gotta go investigate.
Why don't you do something about that guy?
I think.
Or the people who say, you complained to me, what about that guy down the road? Yeah, I know what you're saying.
At first I thought, like, everybody that has a position in the town maybe could enforce it. But then that starts getting in dangerous territory.
No, I heard, the way I heard Mike and you are talking about it, I thought it was pretty clear that it was you, Mike, well, I shouldn't say, zoning administrator, the health officer, and the, and the police. That would be the people involved in enforcing.
Right.
So we don't want to bother with it, we'll let the, let the.
Yeah, let them just be turned.
Let it out.
I will definitely give my input when they start talking about that.
Yeah, I think we should.
We might, we might even be able to, or they might even be able to put somebody on specifically for this. You know, I mean, this is a temporary thing, just to.
It's going to.
There's going to be some enforcement, whether it be a cop on or somebody else just take a temporary job to do this. I don't, I don't know how they're going to go about that.
I don't know, I'm not.
We got to have some, the enforcement is what's going to have to come along.
I have not been impressed with the enforcement of the police that we've had in the past. As I said, I showed them an actual video of somebody dumping trash in the woods up on, up the mountain up there. You know, they actually taking it out of their car and throwing it in the woods. And they knew who it was too, but he didn't, he said it wasn't, he couldn't use it, didn't have a license plate visible, and, you know, so, I mean, there's always some, and then they pass it on, I'll pass it on to the, who's the guy who handles, you know, what's his name? He does, when somebody shoots or they kill a deer or something, who's that guy? The game warden, the game warden. Yeah, he passed it on to the game warden. Does he even have anything to say about it? So, I mean, there's a lot of that kind of, it's a lot of that.
You know, I would say that a town in New Jersey has had numerous people dumping in a certain spot. They put up cameras.
Yeah, well, we did that.
And now they're fining people and it's way paying for more than the cameras, okay? They're making, the town is actually making money on this.
Well, we, as a panel proud, which is a little group that does litter pickup and so on, we put up two game cameras, but, you know, it was, it's a big hassle to monitor them. And you've got to get them set just right so that it.
You get a license.
You got to make sure you catch.
Yeah.
If they don't have a license. The last select meeting, they discussed putting up cameras.
Good.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, I think they're taking steps forward too, so.
And I can tell, you know.
How did, how did we come up with the fines and what is the waiver?
That was just in the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, original template.
And that's just a template of it? It's not, that could change.
It's not, we.
What does a $50 waiver mean? A $100 waiver?
I don't know anything, I don't know.
It's basically just putting it in half. They paid it ahead of time or whatever, they could, they could waiver some of the money and not charge so much, but.
All if it's paid within a certain days versus.
Yeah.
Right.
That makes sense.
So again, all of those things probably will change. I know Mike was looking at set fees for doing something like that. I think they raised, before you got on, I think, they raised the amount for dumping off the side of the road here, or if it blew out of your car. If they catch that, they can hit you with a fine on that. And that went all the way out.
You know, since people know that, that I'm working on this, people have been telling me they see junk flying off of, I mean, trucks flying off of the Casella trucks.
There's an ordinance for that.
I know it.
With fines, so it's up to the police.
So are people supposed to make a complaint about that? Like write the license down and?
I think, I think, Mr. Harris is going to discuss it.
Say something.
It's definitely a wrong thing to be doing.
Yeah, yeah.
You should definitely.
I would love to catch somebody.
It's a question we get. The description of the person, the tags on the car, everything.
I mean, nobody really wants, nobody wants, what everybody always says, nobody wants tail tails. But to get some of these things cleaned up, if you see somebody dumping, I mean, as you see on, if you watch videos, you know, YouTube videos and stuff, and people, oh, you're doing that wrong, and I pull out your phone and go over and film them, right? Basically, I have to, hey, let them know they're doing something wrong and they got caught, period, you know what I mean?
I, I've never caught anyone. I have, there's.
Somebody posted something on Facebook about a month ago where somebody threw out some trash along the side of the road and her mail, her mail was in there.
Yeah.
And they said, you better come back and fix this.
Tim Gilbert did that once. He took a bag of trash to the original owner and she, she claimed it wasn't hers, that she gave it to a garbage man.
Well, it could have been. That's what the state police.
It's hard to say that, but it's, I mean, it's, it can be, it can be, you never know.
So, yeah. So I think that this is, so we're leaving enforcement, which is my intention as well. I just think maybe we want to have some kind of, like Fred's, maybe we want to write something in there upon receiving a written complaint?
Why don't we let's.
Definitely a verifiable complaint.
Written and verifiable.
You know, a lot of people are hesitant to come forward and put their name on it, but really, you're asking somebody to enforce it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're asking somebody else to.
To put their body on the.
Get up close and personal.
Right.
I would help out a little bit.
I would think we should leave that up to the select board as far as any kind of.
Okay, so you'll mention it to them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I definitely, I will definitely have a lot to say when, when they get to that point.
Yeah, I'll be in there too.
I will too.
I just want.
Since I know a lot of this.
If we get it to go forward, probably I'll be there.
You're a bell time of select board?
No, I'm not. I just go to them and say.
No, no. Well, this is all I do besides.
So as far as the section four, which is the part that really what I, oh, coupled together, duty of owners and occupants, any, that's, I've been worked that over very thoroughly and I, I think, I think as it stands, it's pretty good. You know, I think we're trying to address two things, that the garbage that people are leaving in their yards and in their pickup trucks and stuff, and the, the problem out on Route 7.
No, I think.
And potential for a tree market by somebody, anyway, no names named. So I think that's what we're addressing and I hope that that covers it somewhat.
Well, I would be, I guess we can move it along. I think everybody kind of in favor, so if we want to make a motion to move this forward, I make a move.
Okay.
I second it.
Second that. Round table, Megan?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye. Okay. Moving that forward to the select board and we will let them tear it up if they need to, or hopefully approval without too much tear up, but. And if they, if they need that, when you send that up, if they need to, want to meet with us on that, that would be, we can do that. We'll just set up a data meeting with them or whatever, we'll just join that.
Okay. I would like to be forwarded on that.
Okay, moving on to discussion of the ARPA funds. This will be pretty quick. I don't think we need to do a lot on it, but I wanted to put it on the schedule for, to discuss. My question is, what kind of a number do we think we should have set aside? If we could do this, it's, it's all going to be up to select board. But I wanted to throw some kind of number at the board. So if we say.
Wait, wait, to set aside to?
Some ARPA funds to help out the town. So if this, if this ordinance goes through.
Oh, help with this.
Providing that that ordinance goes through.
So, yeah.
And everything gets set. We already know, we've been discussing this for long enough, we already know that there's a lot of little problems around town.
Yeah.
Those might need to address with some funding from the town to get cleaned up first. We already know, I know this from just listening to the select board and some of the, and Tom Shulley had to dump, that they're picking up over on the back roads here, where the dump off places have been, that there's a big cost coming out of that.
Yeah.
So.
So you're saying the highway department is.
Right, the highway department stuff's going in, cleaning up, that's going to the dump, it's costing us every time that happens. If we can set aside, I don't know if they'll be able to do it on this, on the ARPA funds, but I want to see if we can set something going forward, if they can approve to do that, and a number. So if we could throw something at them.
Yeah.
My, my feeling was maybe like 10,000 or something like that. I don't know how the board would feel, I just wanted to.
What is the town getting, a million?
Uh, they've already, they got two halves apparently. The first half's already been spoken for, so it's, I think it was just about a million, a half a million or so roughly. That's already been spoken for, they've already got things going. But the second half, when that comes, there's going to be roughly another half million there. And they're going to try to figure out what they're going to do with that. So if we can grab a little bit, I don't know if they can even get a line item in.
So that's the job of the planning commission, is to decide what to do with.
No, no, it's not, no.
The select board.
Select board, not us. Michelle, you had some really good, Michelle had some really good ideas of, kind of, how to encourage, encourage people.
Well, I know, I know before we had talked about, you know, having like a dumpster day type, you know, a couple of dumpster things. I guess we need to find out how much, you know, dumpsters would cost, you know.
It'd be the person.
Yeah, and have a person, you know, it'd be like certain, you know, work with Casella and say like, okay, you know, drop off at this time, pick up, you know, at this time and just, you know, have somebody there that checks IDs as people are coming up with trash. You know, put them in the more problem areas where it's easier for them to, to get there. You know, do we want to do anything where the purchase permits for people to go to the dump? You know, people that can't, haven't been.
A scholarship kind of thing?
Yes, yes, something, something like that. Yes, yes, something, something like that, and then you were just
Don't say dump, transfer station.
Yeah, and then, uh,
Most people say dump.
Most people say junkin', most people say
No, 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 but you know, there's a place in Powell called the Beach, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Down there, there's a bunch of mattresses, television
Oh, yeah, there are.
So that's a place you're not going to patrol very well. Not many people get down there, they don't feel comfortable down there.
Yeah.
Somebody owns it and, um, uh, there's probably fifty other places in town similar.
Sure.
Right, right.
As you say, you went to a place to buy and saw some property.
Right.
You know, I kind of passed around Powell the other day and looked at some places that are quite disgusting and, uh, what are we going to do about them, you know? I mean, if you start picking up, if you start picking up people.
Right.
And I've done this, I put
That's what's going to happen, we got to just, it's a matter of getting on them until we get out
It, it's education, I think the secret is education. The land is valuable, they're not making any more, uh, Powell's sitting in a good spot right now, a lot of
Gorgeous views, gorgeous country.
Well, we, we talked about a few, few, uh, a few meetings ago, we talked about that and Fred mentioned it too, is, is just education on what you can bring to the dump right now.
Right.
People are throwing out TVs and that kind of stuff and it's, some of that stuff is free to go to the dump.
Yeah.
So, you know, why throwing it away?
Why throw it in the woods?
If you can travel to go dump it over there, you can travel to go dump it over there.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, I remember because I, like, I have Casella pickup here, I don't know what I can take to the dump. You know, what I, what I think is something, I call to ask, but it would be great if there was some sort of listing, you know, one on the website, you know, that kind of thing. Um, and then, uh, you know, so you were talking about like the problem areas, you said with the highway department has been cleaning up?
Yes, some locations with, yeah.
I mean, it's
Pull offs, yeah.
I mean, as part, as part of the, the, um, the budgeting, do we, you know, go to them and say how, how, you know, pick out some spots and say how many hours do you think this is going to take and, and get that kind of money and, and have them doing the cleanup and it, and it's getting done.
Right, and that's why I'm thinking, because the ARPA funds are coming, so
Yeah.
If I, I want to go there and just see if we can set aside some money, I don't know what amount they would be able to do. That's what I'm going to suggest it from us here as a suggestion of what we think.
I make, I make a motion, we ask for ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Just start there.
Yep. And it might be less, it might be more, we might have
I'm just putting out a number.
Well, I put fifty thousand out.
You could put fifty thousand, you could put a hundred thousand, but I'm
I don't, I don't think we really know. You don't have the numbers, so why are we putting a number on something?
Well, we, we, uh
We're just making something up.
We need to, we need to talk to the, to the, yeah, the highway department, right?
I mean, I could, I could plug Casella and get the prices on dumpsters, so then we would at least have that, you know, somebody can talk to the highway department, find out how many hours and, you know, how much do you guys make an hour?
Right.
To do this, because, I mean, all these little things, they add up quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Where it'd be like, oh, two thousand was not enough.
Yeah, I've talked to them, they don't really like picking it up, because they're going to be dumping it again. I know the price of dumpsters, I got two of them, and Casella takes most anything. God, Dean, there's a secret there, why don't you get some dumpsters and pay for them?
Tom Shuey's going to give us greener day costs after
Yeah. Did they have a cost of it, did you, did you hear any cost of the, the last pickup that they did? When they went and picked up around?
No, but there's five bags, so we can kind of do the math, they're two fifty a piece.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a daily, a daily thing.
So, I mean, they could give you a rough number, I, I don't think our number needs to be really high, it's just a starting point.
So, and they could change that year to year.
Talking about putting maybe four or five dumpsters in specific locations.
Well, let's, that's
To make it easy for people to get rid of
Just for certain days, like maybe three days a year or something, Michelle, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, something
In addition to the tree dump day.
And we had, we do have to be careful of what we're doing because we know how that goes, I, I've had dumpsters before and everybody wants to drive, throw it in, so you either have to watch them really close or so, it's just somebody's not randomly going throwing it in without
Any idea?
Maybe they have cameras.
Yeah, I was just going to say
You could do that.
Select one is working on that.
Right.
Yeah, so
But this is dumpsters that they're going to put out.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and that's basically, this is what I want, hotspots, you get the ARPA funds a little bit, that would cover some of that cost.
Okay, well, I, I guess what I don't, I'm getting a little, we keep saying we, you know, like it's the planning commission, we're not getting the money, it's They're going to set aside the money.
They're going to try and get it.
Right, they're going to set it aside for this purpose.
Right.
Well, we can recommend strongly. And I think that the quality of life in, in town, the town of Powell would screw up a, a, a lot if people, if there was a, you know, a lot less of this trashing, I really do, it's such a beautiful place.
It, I think it will happen, we're getting closer.
And, and people's land, property values will go up too.
I, I think we need to really offer couple of little ideas to the select board if they want them. Ask us if they want to charge us doing that, and we, we can come up with a list of possible uses for, for, for some additional ARPA funds as, if they come in.
Right.
Depending when they come in.
Um, and they might want to
We could draw up a list of, you know, including what we just talked about and a few other, other things, um.
What, what other things do you think?
Well, I'm, I'm
Cameras, one.
Cam, cam
I hope they don't go to tell us where we're going to put the cameras, so
No, no, I just
I'm looking, I'm looking at the town as it is now, based on the history of what, what we have here for housing. For, for low income housing, old, old trailers, old trailers that are a bank, a bank won't lend on them anymore.
Uh huh.
You can't just tear it apart because you have to get asbestos checked. So these things are going to be getting abandoned or they're going to be, that's, so they're going to be looting them forever. Um, and not living well.
And not having much space to put
Um, at some point, the town's going to be faced with the dilemma of how to get rid of these things.
And then you take them out for taxes.
And if you, and if you've got a, a, a pocket of money somewhere to help with that, to pay for asbestos checks and, and mitigation.
Oh, I see, so we should ask for more than ten thousand, we should, yeah.
Well, coming back to this thing, we, we talked about the mission statement, but we didn't talk about the goals of this planning commission. I think that's what they wanted us to do, was to come up with some goals for the coming year, you know, beyond the junk
Right, something that we're trying to do, right.
So I think that's, that's
That, that should be a
I think that's, this ordinance, um, the, the tr- the trash, household trash ordinance that came about, we kind of like started having a discussion without them asking us to have it.
Well, I don't know, I felt like Mike and you guys were
The, the, the town plan was accomplished, the bylaws were accomplished, so then those two things were accomplished, so what are we, what are we meeting every month for?
No, but I mean, it's not that you and Mike and, and Tom were really, uh, you know, I, I think when there's political will for something like this, it's time to jump up.
Oh, yeah.
Because people like Jimmy can tell you, for forty years, people have been complaining about this.
One overarching goal, maybe be responsive to the, to the changing needs of the town.
Yeah, well, people, I, I don't know, I hear, because of my position in, in Powell Proud and, and here, people complain to me all the time about the, they tell me how beautiful it is, how amazing that you go, I went for a walk up, uh, what is it, Cold Storage Road the other day?
Yep.
Holy smokes, it's gorgeous up there, and trash all along the road, and I picked it up, you know, as I walked, but, uh, you know, there's so many places that you turn around and you're just startled at how gorgeous it is. And that's what should be our image, not this junk along Highway Route seven, that should not be Powell's image, and, and, uh, so
And Powell's not unique as, as far as that goes.
No, but
It's everywhere.
It's pretty bad.
But we live here.
Oh, yeah.
And we care a lot.
Instead of people don't know that it's free to dump a television set, that's why they're dumping it on the side of the road, because they think it's, they're going to charge them at the dump. They should know that people mine those types of things.
And that's just going to, that's just going to be
Maybe, maybe we need to get that out to the public.
So that would be another thing, an education.
Right, some kind of education.
More education.
And that's, I mean, the board's going to come up, the, the, the select board's going to come up with the ideas of what they're going to have to do with that.
Right.
All they want to do is throw something at them and say, if we got ten thousand to work with to start with, that, that'll be a start. They might want, they might throw fifty at it.
They might throw a hundred.
I don't know, because they have to, they control it, we don't.
Yeah.
I would sit in the news show.
Um, but he made a motion, if we have a second on that, I'll just throw it in as ten for now and we'll and we'll see what they have to say, they're going to, they're going to
Say set aside money, you know, for education, there is, uh, every year
It's just going to be a small list.
Every year, the, um, the transfer station that Tom Shuey has in the, in the town
Right.
Uh, uh, the, the report, the town report, he, he explained, you know, it's right there, and I believe it's on the website too, isn't it, uh, Terry?
Who reads that?
Yeah.
Yes, who reads that?
Well, then how, I mean
Yeah, people go to the town meeting.
Right.
People go to the town meeting, read that.
Town meeting.
I don't think a lot of my customers don't read those things.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm going to
I mean, so how do we reach people, I don't know, tal- maybe we could, uh, do outreach with kids too, you know?
We try this at the schools.
I think just getting literature sent it out, maybe, maybe getting it out to the schools and stuff like that, where the kids, if they bring it back.
Yeah, they do that.
If they have the kids, they would bring it back, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah, just, it could pile, I mean, if the board agrees with it, it's just a matter of making copies and say, here, we're going to give them to school.
Maybe important, so you can only run out of time. Ease into it.
Well, yeah, you know, I
And that's what we're going to do.
Get the public talking about the subject a little bit.
Well, I, I like the idea that, I, I think it was you and Michelle were talking about this, about having a six month, uh, you know, where you pass the ordinance and then you give people some time, you know, to, to get things done before you start nailing them.
Right, yeah, that's, I'm sure that's going to happen. Again, they're, they're going to have, select board's going to do a bit of that detailing of that, but
Hopefully it's not another forty years.
I think, I think, I think that's why we're trying to move it
I think it's just so important, it just, yeah, while, while there's some political will right now and people are, you know, getting a little outraged.
It's discussing ERV, it's discussing selectmen, it's discussing the stores, it's been discussed in, all over town.
All over, I hear it.
For a long time.
Yeah.
And I think
Oh, yeah, I've heard it in the town meeting.
That are starting to think about, let's do something positive.
Yeah.
And that's
And something we all agree on.
Yeah.
So?
Regardless of where we stand on that.
Well, I have a, a motion, is there a second on that, what's the motion?
Whether that for the, including ten thousand dollars or for passing the whole one?
Okay, I'll, I'll accept the motion.
You can keep it?
Yeah, just for a number, I don't care if you want to add some material.
Right, they're probably going to change it, I just want
How about an estimated or, uh, use some
What are you going to estimate?
Why don't we just take a motion to, to set funds aside to help
Sounds good, clean up, if we get some money, we get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Another possibility is, um
At least ten thousand?
Just to simply offer
Doesn't matter.
Make an offer to the select board to help create a list of possible uses for ARPA funds, and then
That's what they're going to work
And then those things, those things can come from, from that, but I think to start with, I, I don't think making a decision and doing that.
Oh, no, there's, we're not, we have no authority.
But hit them with a request for ten, ten grand.
I don't see
Somehow we, we offered, we offered to
But we already had some suggestions, we could just
Right, I'm, that's all I'm going to do is submit to them that we're going to, we're, we're
This is what people have talked to us about.
This number to start with, maybe possibly, and this is what we'd like to do with that, or what we, we would suggest to them to do with that, that stuff.
Yeah.
And they could
And just like it's being taken into consideration.
Right, that's all, what do you think? I'm just throwing it as a consideration to them.
Yeah.
And that's it, uh, we, we don't have any control of what is going to happen with it, we're, it's our suggestion to them.
Yeah, that's what we're supposed to do, suggestions.
So do we have, wait a second on that?
No, I rescinded it.
Oh, you rescinded it, you don't want to put any money, so, but I think a suggestion can
I'm, I'm making a motion that we offer, make an offer to the select board to sit down in a meeting, or several meetings, and put a list of possible uses for
I think we should make it clear that we already have a lot of ideas.
When the money comes, the money isn't coming.
When we word the offer to them, we could put that in there that we, we
We have discussed as a group, we have discussed many ideas for
We have, I think to move forward, I think we need to, um
Send this
We can do that.
Yeah, just make, send them, send them an offer to, if, if they want, if they want to charge us to, to do that, or give us, give us the task, task us to do that, we'll put a list.
Make a task, possibly, yep.
Yeah.
I think, I think we should stop stalling so much.
Well, no, well, that's, that's the way government works, I've learned, I've learned a lot about government, really, over the years.
Well, I would like to move, did we move there?
Well, he made a motion, so we have a second on that to do it. He's made a motion on it.
The motion was to Make an offer to the select board. To the select board, to start creating a list of possible uses for ARPA funds.
For ARPA.
As regards
Including trash dollars for
Well, I think they're on the way with cameras, stop, okay? And that, that's what they talked about the last meeting.
Right.
So cameras, we can put dumpsters around, we could get, so that's the ground floor for a basis for starting something. And if they can say, see their way to give us some funding, then thank you very much.
Right, good job.
Right, understood.
So, I, I think we're
So we need a second on that.
I'll thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
Steve. Michelle?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
So now, what do we decide about this?
That's going forward.
It's going forward, hand it forward, it's a
It's out of our hands.
Good job, guys.
Uh, is there anybody in public comment? Nothing? Okay, uh, then look for a motion.
I think this is really going to be, I, I think it's a step in the right direction, I'm really pleased
I would just like to bring one, one thing up.
Sure.
So, this is kind of off the deep end, but, you know, a lot of people will complain about taxes are high in the town. I think the town should bring in more businesses.
Mm-hmm, we worked on that in the past year, I know they've been going backwards on that because they got rid of the EDC bill, uh, board.
Environmental, I mean, uh, economic
Economic development stuff, but then they started doing some other stuff, so
I think, I, I think the planning board, I think the last planning board, when we wrote the town plan, this was our number one goal, to be friendly to business.
Yeah, I think
I think I, I use that.
I think in the past, in the past I'm talking about trying to bring in something like Costco or BJ's on Route seven, there's plenty of property there.
Right.
And that would be beneficial to this town. We, we have discussed that kind of stuff several, several times, and I think this board, um, we, 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 did we submit for municipal planning grant for, for economic
Development, sure.
Oh, I don't care.
The economic development planning board has done this.
Right.
They've been interested for twenty years.
Industry, which would include every, you know, everything. Is anything being done, Tom?
Um, yeah, I think there is. There are some things that were being done, but at, at the same time, I think some things got stalled because
Better place
Some stuff that got put in.
If it comes through to Vermont, goes to Montpelier.
Well
They, they, they handed out, kind of like, we got a racetrack down there, could have been, could have been a Costco.
So that's another
What we've discussed about here.
Right, well, I'm watching guys, it, this town, the way it looks right now, does not attract big business, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I disagree with that, I think this is a perfect portion of, of the state, it's between
No, I mean, the location is great, I'm just saying
You've got people in North Adams benefiting, they come up, you've got Manchester
Sure, no, it's a great location.
This is kind of in the middle of nowhere, and that's actually a good thing.
Right.
It's also a good location for, uh, a train, uh, you know, train stop, for the, the trains to be extended all the way to Albany.
Yeah.
However, I mean, this is something where you can do something about is clean it up at least so that people find it more attractive.
Why do people want to move up the states? Number one, they want tax breaks, for X many years, uh, Montpelier gives these out, Powell doesn't give them out. I mean, realistically,
Yes.
When it comes, we want to go someplace, they want something for nothing.
Yeah.
And that, that's the people in Montpelier get that out. And, uh, I don't know if our guys up there are, on the, on the same
Nelson?
Well, Nelson, Sears, the whole bunch of them, uh, you know, they're the guys that can give the goodies out. And we can just sit there and, and put our suckin' up down, and that's about it. We have a good
But that's not the role, it's not the job
For this area as well.
We got it.
Yeah, but it's not the, it's not the, if you really, it's really not the job of the planning commission.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, whether you like them or not, they, they're the best thing that came to
Do they have produce?
They don't have produce, no they don't, but I mean, uh
Even if it was a small supermarket that came in here, it would do really well.
Mm-hmm.
People, you know, I have to go to Beddington or I have to go to North Adams.
Might give
It's a pain in the neck. I'd rather come down the road and have a supermarket in town, I'd like it to be a
You were at Powell back when we had
Well, and you know
We, we did have, yeah, a pretty nice one. I know, but this is now, and I think we need to discuss trying to bring these things in here.
You're discussing something that's been in business for forty-two years. I've had vegetables for years and, uh, it's just gone by, uh, they'd rather go and get it all at one time. Uh, I still sell lettuce, I sell tomatoes, I sell, like, anything I use, I sell it. Uh, I still sell lettuce, I sell tomatoes, I sell stuff like that. Anything I use, I sell it. But I'm trying to tell you that I don't think that, uh, Powell is, uh, pretty much as big as we're gonna get it. I hope at the Legion, we might start up a farmer's market, which would be good, we got a nice. No, I've been in the Legion, I've been in the Legion for forty years. We've discussed doing things here and, uh. We had a bank wins, we had a bank here once, okay? And I think because a, a local girl was the manager, no one wanted to go in the bank because they didn't wanna know her business. They wanted her to know our business, so the bank was across the street from me in a trailer. We've had a lot of things over the years and we were big time, we're not big time anymore. We were a destination place.
That doesn't mean we need to give up and.
No, no, I'm not giving up, I'm part of it.
It's just not the role, our role, uh, as the planning commission, there is an economic development board. That's who deals with that and the select board. That's not our role, we're here, our job is.
Yeah, it's a good point.
We're done with this, you know, we're done with the junk then, so.
I think, I don't see why it can be our role to, to explore.
Not how it's set up.
It's set up if they wanna come here.
We can set up. I haven't seen anything on the website that there's an economic development committee that's actually. Has any minute.
They stopped that war for now, I don't know if they're gonna reenact it again. I was on it for a long as time, but it, it just, we're gonna. I thought do that right now and add it for a while, went a different direction, so. We'll see if it comes back and, that's what we were discussing, how to get business. Maybe we'll get about two.
Take it off.
There, there is an appetite for about two years. Right, in this town for, for economic development, for business development, to attract businesses. Uh, we don't have, we don't have the, the resources to do much for attracting businesses, but there is an appetite for it and. There's no reason why we should not have discussions, either impromptu discussions or whatever. And so, and work towards if we can find, by having these discussions, we're gonna solve problems eventually. Um, so I, I think it's, it's very much, I don't see any reason why the, the Palm Planning Commission can be involved in. In having those discussions, you know.
But as for the active, you know, going out and someone's, you know, that's not our job.
Right, we're not gonna be active as far as, we're not gonna go out and petition businesses to come.
Basically, all we can do is sit and talk about it.
We can discuss.
Done a lot of that.
Maybe we can energize other people, we can.
Right.
Yeah, maybe, you know, somebody might know a business person that might, might be looking for a place.
Yeah, I know a guy, he, he went to Williamstown, uh, restaurant, uh, down Water Street. But, uh, you all right? We, didn't we designate some places?
Yeah, we were, we were talking.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And, and somebody needs to come and say, we wanna go there. And we're waiting for those people to come. I talk to those people all the time. Williamstown, Williamstown's a better place.
Here, here's what I wanna do, um.
I know, I, my, my business is getting bigger and, and I'm moving it down to Williamstown, cause there's no space. There's no space here for me to, to have, you know, a thousand square foot facility. So I have to go down there to do it.
Do you have a long-term lease with Williamstown?
No, they're letting me do six months at a time.
Okay, maybe, you know, I don't know, could, all, all of a sudden do something, you know?
Yeah, that'd be great, cause then I'd dive all the way down there to do stuff.
Yep, yeah. What we wanna do is try to, uh, maybe on our next, we could schedule this, more of this discussion for our next meeting.
Yeah.
To discuss more of this. We got this out of the way for right now, so it's.
And I just have one more thing, so. So, thi- this modular building came from where?
Came from over by the river, in that area.
It was built, I thought it was built in New Hampshire.
Well, I don't think so, but, uh, the company is in, uh, over on the, maybe it's on the other side of Connecticut. It might be on the other side of Connecticut.
Yeah, I'm not sure where.
Yeah, but it's over on that side.
Built in Vermont, correct?
I don't know, I don't believe so.
I think it was built.
That's something the select board could tell you.
And I was watching the YouTube video of the select board talking about the dog channel.